You can start with my name. I'm sorry. Good morning, everyone. Guess at this time, uh, that was on the. Okay.
Anyway, you can share them, I guess. There are three stop signs that we need to. These are located. In Fountain County, out by Coal Creek Country Store. This is mine, just from a notes to keep up with.
I just wanted to give one to Travis.
Travis can have mine one of these, because I don't need it, as long as you all know what I'm talking about. But my husband and I recently moved into a home on the end of West Bone Break, at the dead end where the gravel pits at. For the last two years, we've been working on this house, and for the last two years, I've been dealing with these intersections that make no sense. This, the first page there. Is the area that I'm talking about. The crossroads there. Is the main one, on the east side of the picture. That stop sign. Is, I think I marked all of yours, it's in that, on the right-hand side in that curve there, it's facing Cindy's store. That's the only traffic that stops. So if you're coming from Kingman and turning left, and as normal, if I'm coming from my house and turning left at that intersection. There's a picture in there, it just so happened that morning, I was turning that way. This is how vehicles cross, and we both have the right-of-way. We have the right-of-way, we both have the right-of-way on that corner, on the second corner, and at 100 West and Bone Break Road. Everybody turning left just crosses. They make no sense. So the second picture is the sign that's up, that tells you where the crossroad is at, it's a T. Both of, all three of these intersections come to a T, and at T's. You should stop on the right-hand side of the road. The continuous traffic shouldn't have to stop, and even if they do, it's only one side that stops. But just in the last weekend, there's been like five times coming home, people coming out of Petersburg. Were both turning left, and the more that stuff grows up, you can't see traffic coming out of town. It just, I think the stop signs need to be where the actual Ts are at, not the cross-traffic continuing. But I was told you guys needed ordinance, ordinance to move these stop signs, so.
So you're just talking about facing them at different angles, same spot?
Well, actually, on, right here now, there's one stop sign right here. There's going to be a stop sign here and a stop sign here, there's no stop sign, well, there is one here.
This stop sign faces the.
Right. And I'm just saying, traffic that's turning on here, needs to be one stop and waiting for these people to make up their mind. I mean, I think everybody slows down and looked, but like I said, there's been so many times, the one picture of the vehicle turning right in front of me that morning.
You know, because I think, won't be at your ears now. One, definitely a question right there, well, don't bring stuff as the old railroad car bridge, the wooden structure. I think that's why the stop sign, where they was, that way, that we ought to wait on that bridge.
Right.
And I think it needs to be changed, honestly.
It's constant, everybody just.
And there's like four or five other places that really need to be addressed. It ought to really be somewhat case discretion, of what he wants to do best. That's change, honestly. And if you're, and stuff like that, that's fine, yeah. But it really ought to be case discretion, or not even this.
And then the 100 West, um, I don't have the proportions on that, but this narrow line, the 100 West, and it comes straight into a T. So your only stop sign is right here, traffic coming out of the gravel pit. They're just cross crossing.
So honestly, I mean, everything she said, we, they, when she was there, I think this could get.
And now I'm just out there currently, so now it's more often, like I said this weekend, I bet half a dozen times, traffic, you know, everybody just.
I don't really have a trigger now. When I can.
No, 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 but I'll let you, I'll gladly hand that off to you. Okay, so I don't need to stay for any kind of help, because.
We will get it figured out.
Thank you. Thank you, I, I agree with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brooke, from the effort too, that's a great.
Thank you, I'll give that to Jason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll take my word.
Unless you want to sit there.
Let's move on to the forgiveness of the fines.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 17th. I'll say.
Fines, um, I'm for the order of them, in the amount three hundred twenty-two thousand nine hundred fifty dollars and seven cents. Beyond public findings and payroll fines.
I'll make a motion to approve all three.
Corner collection of smid, the ambulance board, help department, the board, sheriff.
I'll make that motion.
And now, well, this you can't say all of the.
Since I'm having to have. Two public hearings. Uh, separate, so we'll start with. The state of two thirty-four property, this is simply a, a time for the public to be heard on anyone who. Uh, the statutory phrases and propriety of the disposition of real property. I'll show the public hearing in the 9:08. The violation to be heard on. The propriety of selling this property on the public lot of auction. Seeing no one showing, we showed the public hearing on the propriety of selling. Real property, state row two thirty-four and Kingman. Second is a public hearing, and sell the property, sixteen acres of wooded. Property of the county farm. Now is the time for us to discuss. The issue of the propriety of the proper. Benefit to the county to dispose by sale or at auction of. Being sixteen and seventeen acres of county farm. Uh, bond property, which we. So that public hearing in the 9:09. And, which you speak. Alright, please show the hearing, propriety of selling the property in county farm, about sixteen acres of so closed and continuing.
Okay, we have, um, the fountain school fund, or calling has to distribute it in the first. For the amounts that she was.
I'll make, yes, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the one, one more of them, but. I'll say.
Additional appropriations for the plan commission, to the government, okay, progressive plan, I think, some. An on-call agreement to not exceed this amount. Then did you have anything you want to say about this, this is part of the planning commission. Or where?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Department of Health is, right?
Okay, we did get the, you know, this, on behalf of.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so, yeah, so far this year, we've had eight. Does she, does she send that to us or? Okay, Jill Pauline with the THI Air Medical, was something we introduced in the county two years ago now, is that right? Um, with the stat point. Um, she, every year, we kind of get a little bit of update of how many people has used that program. Um, getting the cost, so the fact points coverage will remain the same, right, for this year to cover all households, which is forty-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-four thousand, county pays for. Um, all residents are included in that. Uh, they did discount the, it. And this will be included in, in the same thing, you, all residents will continue to use the discount for those patent upgrades, which will make your household cost just thirty dollars a year, so if you can. Uh, expand your coverage on behalf of your, if you're a resident, you can spend your coverage to surrounding counties, the long staff, I picture up. Um, you'll still be covered, it used to be forty-five, so they did deduct that, uh, fifteen dollars. Oh, Fountain County had eight flights, um, just this year, from January, February, and March, up until April fifteenth, uh, which is. The, the forty thousand she goes into is, is the cost, is less than one flight. Um, which, so she granted benefit, eight people have used it just in the first quarter. Uh, and the forty thousand dollars have been spent for the entire year for all county residents, plus one flight, so we weren't exceeded our. Our capacity, seventy-five, but I think, yeah, first couple, so. Yeah, uh, it's very benefit to the, the county residents. I think it was long the council, I. I, I don't perceive them going away, but I think they're good.
Uh, you said thirty dollars for a handrail for this round, we can, that.
Thirty dollars, I don't know what that's thirty.
Yeah, so, so every resident gets it for free. Um, but you can expand that coverage to, and I don't know the particular amount, I have to look up. But you can expand that coverage, uh, if you're outside of Fountain County, I believe.
Jason County, so any of Jason County, Fountain County. If you're in those adjacent counties, then you're covered. Anything outside of, anything like, let's say you're down in, down, down in southern part of the county, the state. There's help, there's, you can, there's, you have, they provide you, you get covered by the additional cover.
I'm getting that, oh, no, I'm moving to county better. For that, county, state of Indiana.
And, of course, has to be THI, you know, you know, by chance, by blind IU, what do you call, you know, that, that everybody's district, you're not covered if they, under this program.
Any other questions? Um, she said it's good until the end of the year, does, expires. Your budgets are violating for that, so.
So we just want to be sure to share this for a bit.
Okay, yeah, good, okay, let's cover. Hello.
TV's not on. Can't see if that is on.
Yeah, the TV is not on.
Hey, Brad, okay, Pat.
Go for it, okay, yes, Patty, I'm sorry, it's all right, just a couple things. Um, first thing is, um, and you by no means have to make any kind of decision today, I just want to put it on your radar. Um, copy fees for non-form documents right now, send ten cents a page.
Any chance you can do a big bill? A fifty? Okay, okay. I went to the bank and they gave me a damn fifty, nobody uses fifties. Yeah.
Hey, mute.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyway, since COVID.
I worry about our dollars on the amount, and that's, uh, that's the issue.
Sorry, hey, I, I just don't want to.
We're.
Prices. Eight, everything has gone up, and with the.
Good morning.
I'm five in my bones, sorry.
Have a good day.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, he's gone. Anyway, um, I don't worry about it. People come into our office now, I mean, asking for copies of things, and, um. And we've even had people say, like, typically, we do not provide court packets of, of paperwork, of self-help paperwork. And people come in and want to, we'll print it out for them, so, okay, it's ten cents a page, that's all right, because that's way cheaper than what I can print it at home for. And so, just might get it on the radar to maybe think about raising non-court document copy prices. Um, I've checked around in some other counties and, yeah, but, so.
For their pay.
About legal, usually legal is for them. Because we don't ever have anything that's current legal.
You can get that.
We can add, because, yeah, if there's anything in the office, it's a legal page, and they want, I mean, and that would be a court document, it would charge a dollar.
Is there a standard, have you heard a number float around?
Well, there's, my first thought is there, there's a statute. Um, but I don't know what the, what the limit is, if other communities have gone higher, then. If, we can take a quick survey and see what, if, if, fees have to be, just, you know, you have to be able to articulate the reason for, for the, what it's paying for, it's not supposed to make money.
Yeah.
Which is supposed to reimburse, and, yeah, I don't think you've ever heard those costs have gone up, so, first, we have to see if there's statute or a limit, and then see what, uh, other communities are charged.
Andrew, I do a lot of court houses, when I go through a reporter's office or any of the courthouse, I pay a dollar a page. That, that, you know, Boone County charges that, uh, typical Boone County charges that, I pay a dollar a page.
But is that for, like, court documents?
No, not for court documents, for, like, a recorder's office, I want a copy of my deed.
Yeah.
If I pay it, it's five dollars, a share, a dollar a paper. So, unless there's anything wiggle up here, prohibited, those, twenty-five cents, I think it's still a deal.
Yeah, for sure. I just want to be sure.
Calling, you probably get something on your office, so. So maybe we can get some figures together.
Yeah, just keep it on the back there.
And we need to think about electronic copies too. Because someone asked for those from us.
Yeah, that's a bit for our best. That's in the Public Records Act, and I don't think we're allowed to charge, even though there's time component, I don't know if we're allowed to charge for somebody just slipping you an email and saying, email this.
But if they want it on a, a disk or a.
If they provide them a disk, yeah. Yeah, we, we, like, video records. Somebody goes to law enforcement, somebody went to the sheriff's department, the sheriff's department, we changed the piece for that a few years ago, that's like a hundred fifty thousand. Um, so, it's, uh, we can.
Any fees like that, that's a whole different.
We'll do some research, maybe put it on next meeting, and we'll get it talked about.
Okay, and then the only other thing I have is, um, this, this election tomorrow will be the last election that had, and we'll vote at the High School. And so we will be moving in for November to Calumshire, from three, three, so.
For all the elect.
Yeah, they, we're taking us there. That's what I remembered. Is that, that's it, okay. Thanks, the chair here. Paul is leaving the building.
So, we got seven hearing job. And being paid for thirty-two of those. And, Roger.
Yes.
You got any? Words?
Sure, yes, yeah, I do have some information, uh, I'm getting technical data from the provider, the binder.
Okay, so this is something we could, you can come back in next Monday and talk to the council about.
Absolutely.
Okay. We probably didn't really get this moved.
They're just looking for numbers at this point.
Yep, so.
Sheriff, what time, what time is it? Next Monday, you said?
Yes. So.
I'll be here.
That's all I got, unless you guys have anything to say. No?
Thank you for attending. From us. See, I got that name right.
Yeah, right.
Again.
Uh, okay, I'm here for Jason today, he's, he's, Rose, Rose, special management, is made tomorrow. He has to leave, uh, his presence. Uh, gonna have a couple openings, Jerry, of course, it's no longer employed by us now. Uh, we have another truck driver that's going to be leaving, so we're gonna be looking for some people, you know, seems to be an ongoing problem we have.
I'd like to, I would like to thank Jerry for all his service to the county, he done an awesome job.
He did. He'd be great, I admit.
And he was a very, yeah, and he was a very, very well-spoken, nice, you know, he was, just kind of, as you know, he, he was very close on the director. The vision.
Super county.
Yeah, had a good passion and love for the county, but.
Yeah.
Uh, Jason's gonna be giving some letters of interest, so we can get involved with Bridge Sixty-Sixth. Uh, he's gonna be asked, see if we get the additional appropriations from the, the sale. The county we had, and the overpayment. For the broom that Rusty bought a few years ago. He'd like to use that money for a couple of box haulers that we have on six fifty north, West Fitz, and Corrie.
Uh, are you talking?
What?
He didn't, I know what said, it's like, the auction money, and then what do you have there?
Sixty-eight for the broom.
Yeah.
Sixty-seven, something.
The auction, broom the auction.
That was a. Have any questions?
So do you want, um, for the usage of that?
Yeah.
A box?
Yeah, we got a box hauler on six thirty north, base beer ten-two, and we have one on quarter, and we have four readout in, stuff like that. Project two then, do away with it.
What do you guys think?
It's, it's a little around three, five thousand.
Hundred and thirty-five thousand.
A hundred and thirty-six thousand, somewhere in there.
Okay, hundred and thirty-five, hundred and thirty-six. It was a sale, the auction equipment, by way of auction, for him.
Maybe one thirty cents, if I can get one of you to.
I'll make a motion. Order a hundred and thirty-six thousand, for the additional preparation from the sale of the ordinary, we all say that.
I have a question, and, and the hot seat, and, um. Eight, five, eight, Bethel Road. If you're going east, from, you go north of my house.
Yes.
To come to that jog in the road, and then it comes back to the right and goes into Tupperware County, that little stretch of Fountain County road there. They've been marking what appears to be utilities along through there, I don't know if there was an intent to resurface that stretch of road. But you might want to come and look at the ballpark when you. Do anything.
And this is the same call to you, rest of the board.
Yeah.
And I do believe Jason has been up there and looked at. That's all I know. But I will let everybody aware of the things in this.
Sounds good, I just want to raise your attention, raise part of your mind, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. No, I think that's everything that we have to pay you. Talk about, you have anything for me?
I was gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we're up at Xavier this morning, it's a light.
We're gonna try to get it done, and get it open back. Uh, working on Grand Creek today, check our box, hopefully get named race for April next week, next month.
I stopped in and looked at project, and I'm like, Xavier, I'm being, I'm saying, and it'll great, of course, so, all work.
On the stop sign issue that Jim presented, we have to wait for movements to get passed before we can move the stop signs.
We can move the existing stop signs. Just in the directions that they've already stopped, if we're gonna stop, the directions we have to have an order. So, will we do that now?
But probably.
Oh, God, we've got two readings.
If we're gonna do that, I bring all of them to that, or they all gotta be separate, on different locations?
I'm not talking what she complained about, but if there's an existing stop sign, and she's saying it's turned at a. If, we have a, if there's an ordinance that says that I wrote X, and it's, it's stop going east. Then you can, you have discretion on where the sign is located, but. It's not, that, it's not intended for it to turn that to make it, you know, and stop going in different directions, all right.
But it's not, stop going west, and we want it to stop going west, we need a warning to say, and, so, okay.
That's when all have more room down there, we, we have ready to do it, that way, we can.
I think that was the question, Ken, if you have multiple of these, should you bring them all at once, it's a package?
Oh, yeah, that's easy, learn that.
Get them written down, and wait next month.
And, for the purpose of the ordinance, it, it's very simple, it's just describing what the intersection is and which direction to stop it. I mean, so we don't need a lot, it doesn't need a lot of technical stuff, like Roger said, if there's that. Configuration of the, the cut through, that's just making those two three-way stops, that's all the ordinance said, three-way stops, and the county highways present has a scrap and replacing the sign.
All right, you know? Anything else?
Back here.
Well, I'm back asking for more money, you like them chasing the dollar. Um, that's traditional appropriation, and I have, um, a printout here. So, um, our housekeeping and maintenance, um, the mask that you have our, uh, limited nine funding budget. But we have. The total of twenty, twenty seven, hundred and fifty dollars, uh, fifteen hundred dollars, which is for antivirus server and for computers. They're coming up and we only realized, we just realized that only half of our computers are even being utilized with the anti antivirus. So we need to get those up to, up to speed also. Um, we have seven hundred dollar, uh, we're applying for a Medicaid billing, um, so that way we, anyone that comes in with Medicaid, we can recoup some fees from that, um, those services. But in order to do that, we have a fee that we have given the state to enroll in that program, and that's about seven hundred dollars. Um, and then we have a four hundred fifty dollar, uh, bill that was outstanding from, uh, the county, uh, from the separation of some of our electronic files. So.
All my emotions improved the digital appropriations between the federal and technical. I would say that.
Who's in favor?
Hi.
Anything else?
You got anything else?
I don't have one right now, that's good thing. Yeah. We have nothing.
I'm sure I do.
Okay.
If I think, when I think about it. When I think about it.
Thank you.
Let's see, is Josh still on? Do you have anything?
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
So we'll add this to the pool, does anything, any, anybody need anything from McDonald's while I'm still here? Um, sorry y'all, um. I don't really have anything, I'm on vacation this weekend next, I'll be in county this week doing some, some chores and stuff, but, but I'm leaving next week. Um. Staff's ready, rip roaring, ready to go, so hopefully things stay just like they've been the last several weeks. Um, but otherwise, I don't really have anything, unless y'all have any questions.
No, I don't think so.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mary. We'll bring it back.
I really don't have a whole lot, the main report for F and R, I sent everybody on the panel, I sent everybody that's using it, but you know the law. Name down the two, master notifications that I can talk to you about later to show you the difference. We'll have to move on those.
Right. Awesome, thank you, nice, baby.
Moving, uh, running forward out there, Geraldine and over, good job, we've got, you've got the concrete spread out now. I told him just to leave it like that, because I really don't have intentions to bring a grinder out there this year, that expenditure will put that down the road. Unless highway needed some, they could come get some, but we're going to just leave it spread out right now. The only problem I can see is if you guys make some kind of agreement with the, uh, people to buy the land to the north. It's got concrete on it too, so we would probably have to move it then, but that's down the road, I know, so.
I think it's pretty much, um, they're, they're willing to pay the twenty six thousand dollars.
And that, that would be from the sixty five, yeah, that is from the sixty five, and which that part will be done. He spread it out because it's so big a pieces that initially it would be broke up even before people went to a grinder. But he just, he's got it laying out, it's not fire line, but just laying out, so, and I'm going to have him do it like that. So we either grind it or we hollow away, whatever the other, so, but that's, other than that, he's done a great job, it's looking really good.
The red dome, the concern I have with spreading out concrete is, it's very hard to maintain, you'll start having saplings going through them, you'll start having little pieces going.
And I'll be in there that long, but I'll give, maintain that problem. That shouldn't be a problem for me, I can, I can maintain that. Knowing it's a limited time, I mean, come, uh, spring of next year, if we get down to that thing, you know, look into budgeting so that I can take that concrete out, either hollow away or we'll bring a grinder in, I'll have a price on a grinder at that time. Right now, most of the grinders in the area are tied up, so it's pretty hard to do many where.
Yeah. That means you can't go anywhere. Okay, thanks, thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, quick update, I see you guys picture of the development, right? That's our first people grain that we've done, it's on in thirty forty years.
Yeah.
And it's awesome. We took a pair of properties to show you guys, I shared them with you.
Okay.
It looks amazing, so I'm very happy with that. That, that's one of the hardest ones, because we had to go through D and R for the weapon.
Sure.
The rest of it, it's very easy when you start. When a minute's on.
Everything went smoothly on it? Uh, everything went smoothly on it?
Yeah, everything was fine, the only thing we had, and I think there may be an adjustment cost downwards, is originally we had talked to the farmers about spreading spoils onto the field, but we're cutting it very close to their planting season. And those spoils are very, very bad. Undo headaches, so the farmers are okay with us piling the soil, and then in the fall when they cut, they will split it. Take care of it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I do, uh, uh, at the planning commission, you know. That's very concerned that that right-hand map, the one on the right was, uh, in stone on, uh, what was it going to be on the? It, it, it is.
Informational in that. Yeah. That can tell.
He, he thought that you had said it was in stone, I just wanted to make sure before by that.
This is out where. Yes, yes, yeah. This, this is what exists today. You know, we can adjust it, we can change it, there's, but this is what reality looks like today. You know, the yards are residential, the blue, the greens, all that, that's all we have today. If, and that's part of the process of doing the reset, if you're unhappy with it, then this is good time for us to change whatever you guys want.
And then get it.
Yeah, I mean, I'd say, I'm going forward through the process, it's, it's up to the decision of the planning commission and what, and what here. How it is moving, that's a good one, that's a question I could set in stone, but that is an accurate depiction of the zoning map that was voted in all the way back to begin.
I think the issue was there were some markings on the map that showed residential and it was agricultural, and so.
I did a good job of explaining.
He did, and they just couldn't get it through their head, it was just informational and it was based off of information that you retrieved from the assessments office on classifications, whatever, and because the planning commission never actually voted on it, you know, there's. It's choice.
If there's a parcel, if it's like red, which is residential, is recorded in your sensors office, that's how it became red. You know, there, we have no stake in playing color games on this, just whatever that buzzer had, we brought it, brought it in here.
And so if it's in red, it's probably more than likely it was a homestead credit, whether it's on agricultural, I mean, my house is on certain agricultural, but then so much of it is classified as residential, so it's going to show up red, even though it's farm.
And I need to get all of Jim's question answered, I mean, you see that, man?
I, I did, I, I just got back on a ten day, you didn't wait, so I'm going to, I'm going to my office today, I'll throw everyone. I'll make sure I address everyone, I'll help you guys, absolutely.
Judge. Um, we see that you're on Zoom, did you have something for us?
I figured it's in court.
Sentence. I'll measure motion to close then.
One favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
One of your shorts on there. Yeah, I still, yes. We, I'm probably classed with your opinion. I wonder.